Good evening. I'm calling this meeting to order at 7:02. All current members of the council are present. Before we go any further, I just -- there was a mention at our last meeting of a polystyrene ordinance. In case anyone's here, that will not be on for tonight if anyone's here for that. At this point, I'd ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is one of the things we enjoy doing, which is swearing in of new police officers. So I'd ask Captain DeCretenzio to come forward.
I'm going to try -- kind of uncomfortable having people to my back, so.
As long as you speak into the microphone, so.
Before we get into the actual swearing in, I just want to talk a little bit about the two new offices. I have the pleasure of swearing in tonight, and I'd like to thank the Town Manager, Town Council, Town Clerk for the few minutes out of your time tonight to do this. And it would be my pleasure later, but if I could have Patrolman Nathan DeCosta and Patrolman Matthew Mailhop come forward. I figure if I have to be up here talking about them, they can be a little uncomfortable, too. We can all look at them. A year ago, this month, these two offices applied to the Barrington Police Department along with 84 other applicants. The following month, in February, they took a physical agility test. Following month after that, they took a written test in March, April, and/or May. In that timeframe, they had to go through a couple of interviews comprised of different members of the Oral Board. In addition to that, they went through a very comprehensive background check. The first thing on the background check is a videotaped interview that lasts between an hour and two hours, very personal questions, about nine pages of questions. To get through that, we do a background. We not only talk to them in that interview, we talk to people who they live next to, people they've worked with, previous colleges, talk to security from those colleges, see what type of response, if they had any, you know, to their dorm rooms, if they stayed on campus, local police departments in the area, if they, you know, if they stayed in housing off campus. So you'd think at that point, we started with 84, and sometime in June, we end up with two offices out of 84 applicants. And they're not done. And then they go in, in June, July of 2018, they started a 22-week police academy, rigorous police academy, more written tests, more physical training, weapons training, you know, we all know, it's 22 weeks of tough work. They get through that, still not done. So we're one year later today, at least this month, and they're still not even finished training. They're now in what we call the Field Training Program. That's a national standardized program throughout the country, a model at, I believe, San Jose. But it's a 12-week program, and then they'll still be in training. So it just shows you what they had to go through to get where we are, and they're still not even close to being done. And they'll have a one-year probation every period on the department that they'll have to get through with the training. And with that said, I will officially swear them in. I don't know if I can get closer to them. Raise the right hand. I do solemnly swear that I shall be true and faithful
To solemnly swear that I shall be true and faithful
unto the state
Unto the state
and support the laws and constitution of the United States
And support the laws and constitution of the United States
and that I shall
And that I shall
well and truly execute
Well and truly execute
to the office of patrolman
To the office of patrolman
in the police department in the town of Barrington
In the police department in the town of Barrington
for the period of my term of service
For the period of my term of service
or until another be engaged in my place
Or until another be engaged in my place
or until I be legally discharged therefrom
Or until I be legally discharged therefrom
so help me God
So help me God
I hereby accept the office of patrolman
Hereby accept the office of patrolman
in the police department of the town of Barrington
In the police department of the town of Barrington
and agree to obey
Agree to obey
and be bound by
And be bound by
such rules and regulations
Such rules and regulations
as are or may be from time to time
As are or may be from time to time
prescribed by ordinance
Prescribed by ordinance
passed by the Town Council of the town of Barrington
Passed by the Town Council of the town of Barrington
so help me God And with tradition, we're going to have the offices pinned by their choosing a family member. So we'll do this one at a time. And Shelby Rogers will come up and pin her fiance, Matthew Mailhop. This is Matthew's fiance. He wore his vest, the smart newly -- a new husband-to-be. She's a nurse, so one good hint.
Officers, you're all welcome to stay for the whole meeting if you want, but don't feel obliged. The next item on our agenda is announcements, and I would ask our Town Manager, Jim Cunha, to take us through those.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I give the families an opportunity to depart because I think the new officers are buying dinner, so?
First of all, we'll be having a special election for our vacant council seat. That special election will be held on Tuesday, February 5. The location is to be determined. We're hoping for one polling location, and that will be announced. And anyone that would like a mail ballot, the deadline for a mail ballot application is January 15. And that can be -- those applications can be filed with the Town Clerk's Office downstairs during the regular working day. Right now, there'll be a couple -- if you're a town employee, town resident, a couple of our department heads will be passing out some yellow cards, their iContact cards. They will allow you an opportunity, if you choose to sign up, to be on an email list, and you can choose from three different, all three or just one. You can be notified regarding elections. You could be notified regarding boards and commissions and emergencies. So if you so like, we would appreciate if you'd fill them out, and you can hand them back to one of our employees, who will take them and put you in our database. And finally, for the veterans, there is a -- the Veterans -- United Veterans Council Barrington is updating the Honor Roll Board that's in front of Town Hall on County Road. If you are a veteran and you are qualified, please go to our website or stop by the Town Clerk's Office and pick up an application that you can fill out and forward on to the United Veterans Council for your inclusion on the board. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. The next several items on --
Polystyrene was not.
Oh, just again to remind folks that there won't be a polystyrene discussion tonight. However, we will be having a polystyrene ban. This is a -- an ordinance that we're looking at banning polystyrene or styrofoam and a variety of other kinds of non-recyclable plastics. And that is dated -- that is scheduled for January 23 at 7:00 in these chambers.
It's a workshop.
That'll be a workshop, and the workshop will involve a gentleman from Brookline.
Brookline.
What is his name?
Clint Richmond.
Clint Richmond will come down to tell us of their experience with it. And also, we'll have a business owner who has gone polystyrene-free and plastic-free.
He's actually gone plastic-free from Westerly. I'm hoping that he will be there as well to show samples of other alternative food service ware.
Our goal for that is to hear from them, to learn about the ordinance, to speak with business owners in Barrington who will be affected by the ordinance, get feedback from them, and help them to understand what the ordinance is going to do as we talk about Also mentioned very briefly that in early February, we will have a discussion on the field fees. We don't have a date for that, but it will be early, first two weeks of February. And that'll be another workshop. The next several items on the agenda are what we call the Consent Agenda. These are items that are considered routine and will be enacted typically by one motion. There won't be any separate discussion of these motions unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We'll vote on the consent agenda minus any of those items, and then we'll vote on the items that have been removed. Is there anything from the pub -- anyone from the public who wants anything removed? Anyone from the council?
Can we remove the minutes from the November meeting from the consent agenda?
And could we remove abatements and correspondence?
Item 9, item 11.
Could I ask the council members to make sure your mics are on when you're speaking and that the mics are close to your mouth? Thank you.
I was also going to remove the correspondence, but I think there are a couple of issues with the October minutes, not necessarily the executive session. And I'm not sure how to deal with that. There were corrections that I had asked to be made that were not made or don't appear to have been made, as well as -- as well as another setting of a public hearing.
So those -- you addressed those in your -- when we voted on those minutes in the past, but they just didn't appear as shown.
Right.
These are items that you've already talked about.
The wording, yes, but not the public hearing.
But you did talk about the public hearing at the previous one.
Well, we approve the minutes
Right.
with the understanding that there would be a public hearing for BYOB, January 7.
Oh, that's right.
And that's not on the agenda tonight, and I'm concerned about.
Right, so there were some last-minute changes that needed to be made to that ordinance before a public hearing. So I actually asked that it be continued to your February meeting.
So it doesn't have to be a part of the agenda tonight as a continuation? That's all I'm?
Okay. At the end of the meeting, when we set up the agenda for next meeting, we'll take care of that.
Right. Is the BYOB ordinance, we may need to reintroduce that.
It does have to be reintroduced because the changes that have been made have been very substantive.
Okay.
Okay.
So what I was going to say is that at the next meeting, and do it now, we'll have a reintroduction. That'll give the public and all of you time to look at it before the public hearing in March.
That's fine. I just thought that the issue should be addressed, and I don't know what to -- how to make the corrections for the terminology that was used that I don't -- I didn't see reflected in the minutes that we received.
Well, we've already voted on them, so I think we can address those offline. I think you can just point out where the changes that we voted on were made
Okay.
at the last meeting to Mary and--
I didn't do it publicly.
Oh, you didn't. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I misunderstood. I thought we voted on that. So I guess we can address the October 1 minutes. They're here. I saw them as being -- they were really supposed to be just the executive session minutes, but they are here. And when you click on the link, it takes you to the public hearing minutes.
It's a minor correction, but they -- I want it to be corrected.
Is it a Scrivener's error, meaning just a, like a typo or
No.
misspelled?
No. It's a concept error.
Right. So they're on the agenda tonight. You have the ability -- oh, they're not on the agenda?
They're not really.
So here's what we'll do.
Thinking about October 1st.
Okay, so here's what we'll do. We'll simply add -- we can bring those minutes back up again on the February agenda. We'll just add them as an agenda item. And that way, they'll be on the agenda. You can amend and re-vote on them.
Okay.
That's procedurally how you deal with it, because if they're not on tonight's agenda, you've got to wait till the February agenda.
Okay. Then it's just the correspondence.
Okay.
And that's for the October meeting?
That's the public hearing for the October meeting.
Okay.
The minutes for that. So the first item that we have removed are the minutes for the November 5 public hearing and the executive session minutes for the October 1, 2018 hearing, which -- there was a link in there that took you to the public. There shouldn't have been a link because it's executive session minutes, but I understand we've read -- we read them at the November hearing, so we were going to approve them tonight.
Oh, I see what happened. I don't know how they got there.
So in any case, having removed those, the November 5, the October 1, the abatement list and the correspondence, do I hear a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented with those modifications?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so the first one is item 7, which is adopt the minutes from the Town Council meeting, November 5, 2018, and October 1, 2018, executive session meeting. And Councilman Breyer wanted to remove those. Is that right?
Yes, I want to abstain. I wasn't at the meeting and didn't have the minutes.
Okay. So we'll -- we can vote on those separately. I wanted to point out one thing in the November 5 minutes, and this is on the third page, and this relates to the new charge of the Resilience and Energy Committee. It currently reads, Mr. Carroll stated he would like to amend the charge to, quote, "committee members shall be identified," and then there's a strike-through, and then there's an addition, "with the goal of selecting members with." It was a little confusing, but I think what I said was that it should read in full, "committee members shall be identified with the goal of selecting members with the following skills and experience." So that should change right there at the top, and then below Proposed Scope, it should also change where it says, "committee members shall be identified with the goal of selecting members with the following skills and experience." Do you see that that's?
I don't see where you want me to state it under Proposed Scope.
No, it's below Proposed Scope, the paragraph that starts committee members below that whole section on Proposed Scope, about an inch up from the bottom. You see where in bold it says, "Motion by Mrs. Waymouth," right at the bottom? And above those bullets?
Oh, I see that. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that.
No problem. Okay, so with that change, do I hear a motion to adopt the minutes from the Town Council meeting on November 5, 2018, and accept the sealed executive session minutes of October 1, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay. The motion carries. The next item is item 9, and that's the abatement list. And Mr. Boyadon is recusing. Unless there's any other concerns about this, do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda, item 9, the abatement list?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions and one recusal. Next item is item 11, the correspondence. This is the Wildlife Rehabilitators Association of Rhode Island, and Vice President Waymouth--
Oh, actually.
Didn't -- oh.
I did, but Steve did it first. So he can go ahead.
I can go first, sorry. So I was kind of taken with this correspondence, and I didn't know much about this. I reached out to the organization because I hadn't seen us receive a request like this before, and it was pretty interesting. I spoke with the executive director over there, and she indicated to me that most of the organization is volunteer. That includes her, the executive director, and most of the veterinary services. I think the vets are paid for their out-of-pockets, but not for any of the work that they do on the wild animals. As far as a legal background, all of the state's wild animals, and I thought this was weird, are technically owned by the state, and you can't touch them, you can't take care of them, you can't, you know, try to nurse one back to health. Our animal control officer is not equipped to do that, and DEM, I'm told, basically will say unless it's an endangered species, it's on its own. They will obviously euthanize something that's, you know, in dire straits, but other than that, this is the only organization in the state that is permitted to take care of wild animals. They have apparently received about 65, or was it 69, animals from Barrington in the prior year. I spoke to our animal control officer, who said that usually time permits that when she gets a call about a wild animal, and in this month's report, she said there were 13 wild animal calls, that if there's an injured animal, she will take it to the clinic down in Saunders Town, and doesn't follow up to see what the outcomes are, but it's reported that they rehab the animals, and if it belongs here in Rhode Island, they will bring it back to where it came from. I say "belongs here" because when I spoke with the executive director today, she said they're having a heck of a time with a pelican that is on the loose in Rhode Island that apparently came up here from Florida. It's off course, and they're trying to capture it. I asked her if any other municipalities are contributing to the Wildlife Rehabilitators, and she said that actually they do, and the reason we haven't seen these letters is because their experience told them the same towns always contribute and the same towns always ignore the letter, so they just sort of stopped sending them. This year, they changed their mind about that. She indicated that Warren, Bristol, Portsmouth, Coventry, and Charlestown, and she believes that for the first year in a long time, Providence is going to contribute as well. The state does not fund them. So essentially, what we have is we have a program where they're providing a service to our town in the sense that the animal control officer will take an injured wild animal to Saunders Town, and Barrington, sad to say, is right now kind of being a freeloader about it. She indicated she'd be very happy to come to a meeting and talk to us about it. I'm not sure if the agenda would permit us to fund this, but I would propose that we fund it out of the council contingency for this year, and if we need to put it on a future agenda, she said she'd be happy to come talk to us about it. I'm not sure if we--
The mayor's on the consent--
Yeah, so I'd make a motion that we fund the requested contribution to the Rhode Island Wildlife Rehabilitators Association in the requested amount of $2,577 from the council contingency fund.
I'll second that.
Mrs. President, if I could just -- there's a -- you have a $20,000 contingency fund. Currently, we give money to two other charities, long-term commitments, $500 to the Samaritans and $1,000 to the Northeastern Forest Rehabilitation. I can't remember the exact name, but it's a forest reorganization. Those are the only two that you currently give in the levels of 500 and 1,000, and that would come out of the contingency fund that you have in place. Whatever you decide.
I'd like to add to what Steve has said. I've seen a presentation by this organization. It was very impressive. I have donated myself to this organization, and the work they do is, as Steve said, they're the only organization in the state that does this. I didn't realize that nobody else can actually deal with the animals, so I think it's a worthy cause, plus they're animals from our town. I mean, it's not like we're helping some other town's animals. We're helping our own, so.
Our own wild animals.
Yes, our own wild animals.
I should have mentioned two things in trying to figure out what this was all about. They do have a training to be a foster parent
That's right.
for wild animals. February 2, it's an all-day training in Rumford, and don't tell your seven-year-old daughter that you might do it, because she will be heartbroken if you say maybe it won't work out, so.
Now, this is exclusively for wild animals. We do have in our budget some funds for domesticated animals, cats and dogs, that have to be held overnight. I can't remember that--
That's part of the animal control officer's budget within the police department.
Right.
It's currently, I think it's $5,000. Expenditures so far this year are just under $1,000.
Right, but those are -- so this is the distinction. They're asking for money to support the wild animals. That's money that we already pay to support the domesticated animals, right? Okay. And how much do we have left in our contingency fund?
Over $15,000.
Yeah.
Not counting the Town Manager's raise.
Okay, so a motion has been made. Is there further discussion? Made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And that's the last item on the consent agenda. And that's the last item on the consent agenda. Our next item is to discuss an act on interviews and appointments. The first one was to be Board of Assessment Review, but did I see something come across my desk that?
We should approve that, shouldn't we?
We didn't? We didn't already approve it?
We approved the motion, but we didn't approve the...
Oh, I thought we had. I thought we had. With those changes is, do I hear a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. So is Mr. Saul, did I see that come across my desk? He is withdrawing?
Yes.
As is Mr. Holmes.
Mr. Saul, on the board of commissioners.
So we still have a vacancy on the Board of Assessment Review. The next one is Economic Development Committee. Is Mr. Said here? Please come forward. Thank you for coming in tonight. Can you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the Economic Development Committee?
Sure. So I'm a resident of Barrington for the last eight years. I have, I can talk about my educational background, my professional background, if that helps. So my educational backgrounds includes computer engineering, MBA in marketing, and supply chain management. I've been working for some multinational companies focused on renewable energy for the last 15 years or so, including some big global corporations, as well as startup companies. I bring lot of wealth of professional experience in marketing, market research, business development, international business. More importantly, I've traveled around the country quite a bit. I mean, we could choose to live anywhere in the country, but we decided to live in Barrington because we like this town, and I was hoping to contribute and see if I could leverage my skills and help the town in any way. I know tax burden is something my neighbors complain about quite a bit, and, I mean, more economic development is certainly going to help bring the taxes down, or at least stabilize it for the residents of the town, yeah?
Great. Any questions?
You mentioned that you've been working in renewable energy, and I'm just wondering if you feel that the Economic Development Committee is more in your lane than the Resilience and Energy Committee?
So even though I've been in renewable energy, that has been my main focus. I've been in semiconductor's and other electronics industries and so on, in some capacity or other, but my role has been mostly in marketing, business development, strategy and sales. Currently, I'm a head of strategy and sales for a big German company, so I think my experience is pretty versatile in a way. Mostly, I love finding opportunities in my companies to grow our business and so on, so I think that would be valuable for Barrington in economic development, I think.
Okay.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your willingness to serve. I'm going to vote on this right now, so you can take a seat.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to appoint Mr. Said to the Economic Development Committee?
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Our next item is for the Cemetery Commission. We've just expanded the Cemetery Commission from three to five members. Those folks do a lot of work, and it will really help to have some more, many hands make light work. So I'd like to call forward Mr. John Anderson, Thank you for coming in tonight, sir. Could you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the Cemetery Commission?
Well, I'm a lifetime resident of the town of Barrington, was born here, so that's where we want to start. I've been sort of an alternate for the last, oh, I guess, probably eight months, maybe, on the commission, and contributing where I can and what I couldn't and whatever else, and seem to get along very well with the committee, and I'm on the Barrington Juvenile Hearing Board, and I'm there for, I can't tell you how many years, and I thought I could be an asset, and I think the rest of the committee feels that way, or they wouldn't be supporting me over here tonight. So basically, there's not too much to say, because it's sort of a unique situation with the Cemetery Commission, and I'd like to help out.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to say that I met Jack on the juvenile hearing board, and he's an asset to the working board, so I think the Cemetery Commission would do well to have his input there as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd just comment, just so everyone's clear, Jack has been there for, like you said, maybe eight or nine months now, and he might as well be a member of the commission. He is integral, contributes nonstop, and he's a great voice to have in the room, so we're lucky to have him.
Is Mr. Bessel here? James Bessel? Good evening. Thanks for coming in tonight. Please tell us briefly about yourself and what you can bring to the commission.
My name is Jim Bessel. I've been a resident of Rhode Island and Barrington for about two and a half years now. I'm a Air Force veteran, 21 years retired from the Air Force and kind of bounced around various jobs.
There's a Navy vet over there. There's a Navy vet over there. My father was an Air Force veteran, and I've heard all the jokes, the Navy has tradition, what is it?
The... They have trends.
They have trends. It's not old enough to have traditions. It just has trends.
It's true. So I have, after I retired from the military, I was a defense contractor at the Pentagon for several years, and then I decided to change my life up and work for Amazon, and so I came up here and helped them open the Fall River facility, which is why I settled in Barrington. I have a, my last daughter is in high school here at Barrington High School, which is why I chose this community, because it has such a great educational community. But Amazon kind of kept me very busy, and I decided to take a little step back, and I now work for the state of Rhode Island as the administrator of the Rhode Island Veteran Cemetery over in Exeter. I've been at that job for just over, just over a year. I've been working with the Cemetery Commission during that time to help, basically, we put together a website to honor veterans of Rhode Island, and so we are cataloging and transcribing veterans' names onto that website, so that all the cemeteries in the state, the historical cemeteries, the active cemeteries, will all have a list of the veterans buried in those cemeteries. So I've been working with Susan and the rest of the board members to help make that happen for Barrington and the other 38 towns and municipalities throughout the state. So now that I live here, and this position has opened up, I'd like to join the Barrington Cemetery Commission to help continue that work, and to also leverage what I know from the state veteran cemetery to help improve and maintain the Barrington cemeteries as well.
Great.
That's great.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
And your service in the Air Force. Do I, we can do this as a single motion, can't we? Do I hear a motion to appoint John Anderson and James Bessel as two full members to the Cemetery Commission?
So moved.
I'll second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the Committee on Appropriations. We have one applicant, and unless anyone would like to have this applicant interviewed, I think we know that applicant reasonably well. Does anyone want to have the interview? No? Seeing none? I think we can move forward to a motion, and would someone want to make that motion?
Yes, I'd like to move to appoint Steve Premiano to the Committee on Appropriations.
I'll second that with enthusiasm.
We wanted to do that before he reconsidered. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Would the applicant like to say anything, or just get this over with? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for your continued service. Next item on the agenda is the Housing Board of Trustees.
Are these two people from?
Oh, Mr. Saul and Mr. Holmes are not here this evening.
Yeah, but what about the Housing Board of Trustees? Or is that what you're about to do? Okay, okay. Sorry.
No problem. The Housing Board of Trustees is Mr. Guthen here. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Thanks for coming in tonight, and maybe you could tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the board.
Sure, so thank you very much. Let's see, so I am a resident of the town of Barrington for about the last 18 months. Moved here with my wife and two children from the east side of Providence. Spent the, let's see, the last 18 years in mortgage finance industry, the lion's share of that being on the origination side, both for JP Morgan Chase on the west coast and in Boston, as well as here in Rhode Island. About five years ago, I changed to Rhode Island housing as a way to greater support for my family. I was doing a lot of commuting to New York City and Boston, and so I continued to be on the residential side. About three years ago, changed to the loan servicing and asset management side, where I participate in everything from escrow administration to default, bankruptcy, the, as I like to say to it, the sexy side of the mortgage lending business, that's with a J. Just trying to, you know, I came here about a year ago. I was interested in the economic development. I think I stood in front of this panel, and you guys had encouraged me to look at the Housing Board of Trustees, and so I was able to work with our, with my agency's legal department to see if there would be any sort of conflict of interest. Anything dealing with Rhode Island housing, of course, I would be required to recuse myself. You know, I'm familiar with some of the deals, which have more recently happened, Palmer Point, Sweetbrier, although that's not exactly in my kind of daily scope of work. This is stuff that I'm interested in, and, you know, want to kind of serve a civic duty in giving back to the town.
Great.
Any questions for me?
No questions. I will say that one of the things, I'm very happy to have you apply, especially with your experience. One of the things, you mentioned Palmer Point and Sweetbrier. Ideally, we would love to work on affordable housing, not in blocks, in individual homes, recapturing smaller units throughout the town. I think that's generally accepted as a better way of doing things, rather than trying to do it, and so there are a number of plans that are before the Housing Board now, and I'm looking forward to having you work on those. Thank you. I would ask Ms. Shayla Simmons to come forward, please. Thank you for coming in tonight. Could you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the Housing Board?
Sure. My name is Shayla Simmons. I am a graduate of Tufts University, as well as Northeastern University and Suffolk University Law School. I am the Assistant General Counsel at the Cambridge Housing Authority in Cambridge, Massachusetts. So for the past nine years of my career, I've worked with affordable housing and issues surrounding affordable housing, particularly those facing low to moderate income individuals, and so I hope to bring that experience to the Housing Board of Trustees.
That's great.
Thank you.
Any questions? You have a phenomenal resume. This is why Barrington is the best town in the state, because we have real experts who volunteer to sit on boards, who are just perfectly suited for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think Steve must be feeling like the heavens just opened and dropped two angels.
Yeah. We've had a long list of old applicants tonight.
Yeah.
That's right, that's right.
I'd make a motion to appoint Jay Guthen and Shayla Simmons to serve as full members of the Housing Board.
I'll second that.
Made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you both very much. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is our Bristol County Water Authority Monthly Report. Good evening.
Any questions about the content of either of the two month reports that you're looking at, after which I'll make a little bit of a statement about what I'm here for, really tonight, to ask your endorsement of that draft letter.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah.
I have it underlined. What do we endorse?
There's really two, we tried to condense this letter. There's really two issues here. State law says we have to have an alternate source. We found an alternate source, the Pawtucket Water Supply System. This was approved by the State Water Resources Board. The state law says a regional project, and this was to include East Providence, 50% the state contributes. They have steadfastly decided not to contribute. The law says, provided we have the money, so they conveniently avoid putting the money in. So they're violating the state law. We decided, because of the need to protect the citizens of the three towns, to go ahead and pay for this ourselves, and everybody agreed to do that. So we started. We're in the midst of Phase 1, which connects us with East Providence with the tank system, which will give us some care. We can at least shut down a system and inspect it ours, or East Providence, the twin pipes, which have never been inspected, so that's a good safety point. You know about the financial difficulties of East Providence. They have so far declined to participate. So we said, fine, we'll go ahead and do this. Now, their pipelines are over 50 years old, and they've never been inspected. At some point, they're going to have a problem. The pipeline to take care of both communities, East Providence as well as the Bristol County customers, is 8 million gallons a day. If we go ahead without their contribution and say, fine, we're going to reduce the pipeline to only carry 4 million gallons a day, come from Pawtucket, down through East Providence to connect with us. Now, think about that. At some point, East Providence is going to have a problem. So here you have a unit, a transmission line that's designed for 4 million gallons a day that really needs to be 8 million gallons a day, and it's running through the very town, a very city, that's going to need it. To me, that would be an absolute crime from a long-term planning standpoint. So these two big issues are the crux of what we're trying to bring to the attention of all of our elected officials, from the governor on down to all our representatives and senators, and that's why we're seeking your endorsement. We're seeking this from the other councils. This letter will be fixed up to include that, and we will make sure that goes into all of the people concerned. It's another plea. What are the chances of getting the money? I don't know, but if we don't try, we won't get anything.
So is it twofold to both pressure the state to provide the money that they said they would provide for this, as well as encourage East Providence to pay their share of this pipeline?
Well, we're not pressing on East Providence, which you know, they've just changed. They have a mayoral system now. We have a great deal of difficulty in dealing with East Providence, even on the technical aspects of connecting this Phase 1. So we tread very lightly, we tread very carefully. We've been working with them and building bridges to deal with them, and we hope to be able to deal with the mayor, the new mayor, once he gets his feet on the ground and gets things squared away there. At some point, they're going to wake up, realize they have to do this. They have let some of their finances go for a long time, and they had to get into some serious borrowing and bonding, which they didn't want to do. So, you know, sooner or later, infrastructure, you have to pay the piper. You're witnessing all that when it comes to roads and bridges right now from the state level. But this is a project that is important to be done, and putting this information together, we hope, will enlighten the new members that are up there, and re-enlighten those who have heard the message, but may... those who have heard the message but maybe just disregarded it. You know, it could be disregarded because the members at the legislature from Providence, and there are a number of them, decide, no, 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 we don't want anybody getting water from someplace else. We want to make sure that it comes from the Providence Water Supply Board. Well, the amount we take out of a $96 million, 96 million gallon, you know, capacity, we are taking 4 million gallons. And in fact, if we get, if we get the alternate supply with Pawtucket, and we use 4 million gallons a day, it would either be at a max, three in one or one in three, because you have to run water through your lines anyway to keep things fresh and keep things moving. So the most we would be buying, we would be, you know, we might buy 3 million from Providence and 1 million from Pawtucket, or at the other extreme, the other way around, 1 million from Providence and three from Pawtucket. So it's, it's a minor dent to an organization that is supplying 60% of the state's water anyway. And it's needed in South County as much as it is here. So that's why I'm seeking your endorsement. And I'm hoping that you can pass that resolution this evening to say that, and then just have that sent a letter, a note from, from the clerk saying that you've endorsed this request to the state. We'll put all this together as soon as we have, you know, the, the other two towns, Warren and Bristol, and we'll make sure that you get copies of what we finally send up there. Question?
I have always been a supporter.
Yes.
But I feel a little reluctant to support something that we haven't seen.
Oh, you did not, you didn't get it in your packet? There was a, a letter that was in the digital form.
It was supposed to, no, it was, it was, it was attached right to the report.
Yeah.
Right. She gets printed out versions, so she may have not seen it in her...
Oh, oh!
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I did. I'm sorry.
So this is, this is the letter. If you, if you wanted to read it. So let me ask a couple of questions. One, one is a request. You've probably already tried this, but if, I would urge you to try and reach out to our representatives, the United States Congress, to see if we could get some Homeland Security funding, or is there some program out there for this? Because, I'll be honest with you, this, this really scares the hell out of me. This is, have one source of water for 60% of the state is a little crazy. We really need to have that alternative source. Even if it wasn't the law, it just makes practical sense.
I agree to that. We are in communication with our federal representatives. In fact, we're using some of the funds that were given to the state that's going through the infrastructure bank. That was the last, we signed off several million dollars on that a few months ago. So we take advantage of those funds when they are available. And we're trying to be as aggressive as we can to, to upgrade and refurbish our system throughout.
Right.
So far, we've done about 65 miles out of a 230-mile program. Not all of it requires rehabbing or upgrading. And we're working on the details of that to be able to, to really fine tune exactly how much we have to do and when. But we've been very aggressive thus far. We, each year, we extend our plans for 20 years and focus on the first five and 10, but we, we are continually upgrading what we have to do and when we have to take care of it. Right now, we're maxed out, practically maxed out with our current staff in managing these kinds of programs. In other words, you can only manage, you could put out so much for construction, so much in bid, and follow that process, but we only have so many people to do the inspection and to do the follow-through to make sure it's done right.
Okay. Again, it's, it's not just infrastructure, this is critical infrastructure.
Sure.
This is, this is a homeland security issue too. So I would hope that there are funds, it just makes sense to protect that kind of critical infrastructure.
I understand your point.
The next item is, you, you asked that we endorse, take a vote to endorse this tonight. That sounds like you're not asking. We did a joint meeting a few years ago, the three-town boards.
Yeah, but we're asking each town to...
Separately.
Because we gave you the letter.
Right.
We gave you the detail. And, and I don't think, I mean, history says it's a pain in the tail to get the three councils together. Okay, that'll take us another two months before you get together. And so by, by putting this in my report to each of the councils and asking my counterpart directors to go to their respective meetings and ask for the endorsement, we get the three endorsements in writing. We'll be able to say that, we'll put the letter together. Finally, you will all get a copy of the letter that goes, and it's to be sent by to the governor and administration and all our representatives and senators.
My suggestion is that if, that you remain flexible, and if you find that you're having trouble with one of the other boards, that maybe you consider calling a joint meeting again, if that would help to...
Oh, okay.
...get this across. You know, I'm happy to bring this to a vote tonight, but I'm just saying...
And we appreciate that.
If there is an issue with one of the other councils, then maybe having a joint meeting of the three could...
Oh, I understand your point. I understand your point. So far, the sense we have is that there should not be a problem.
Great.
But if there is, by all means, yeah, we would do that. We would do that.
Okay. Any questions?
I just want to clarify the, the costs. And so if, if East Providence does not decide to contribute in the end, it scales from eight to four and costs 22 million?
Yes.
But it's, it's relatively only 5 million more to go with the eight, which is what's needed for both. So I think, I think that is a strong case for why the state should fund this, because if the state is providing half the cost...
Don't be logical.[1010.11][1010.11](laughter) Please. You're dealing with a political regime. Logic is not on the table. It's a state law. It's been approved by the Water Resources Board, okay? So I mean, we've been fighting this battle for years. If I'm a bit cynical when it comes to dealing with the state, then perhaps you understand why. Logic does not count here. That's why we were trying to, to encapsulate the story in this, to make it clear, give one more shot. We will be going after them. We'll be going after them. This is just sort of the opening salvo. We have new people elected up there. Maybe someone will get the idea that this needs to be done.
What, what I was getting at is if, if we do get the 50% reimbursement, if that allows for East Providence, as opposed to...
It should, yes.
If they say no, East Providence is not going to have water, should something catastrophic happen?
East Providence might strike out in a different way. I don't know what they would do. We've talked with them many times, we've dealt with them, but, but East Providence has been somewhat of an enigma politically. Perhaps the new mayor setup will make it easier to deal. They will come to the fore on this. But several years ago, we went up to East Providence to explain in detail what the project was going to be, and it was a plant in the audience came up with a bottle of dirty water that was, that was there from before the Pawtucket plant was rebuilt, screaming, "We're not going to take Pawtucket water." Okay? So the idiots come out and make statements, and, and people look at them and say, of course, we're not going to take Pawtucket water.
I grew up in Pawtucket, I'm okay.
Then maybe you know about them.[1124.58][1124.58](laughter) Maybe you know about them. It's, it's very difficult to deal with the system. We, we are trying to work with them and, and do the best we can. And as I pointed out some months ago, we paid our attorney and our special expert to appear before the, the PUC, which ends up saving Pawtucket about $200,000 a year in costs that, that the, that the Providence Water System wanted to raise our rates. And we got that turned back. We've done that twice now. They paid nothing for this, and this is saving them money as well. So we quietly point these kinds of things out.
You could ask Mr. Keough to send a copy of that bill to Pawtucket, I think.
Sure. But I do appreciate your willingness to endorse the letter. And if there are any other questions, just let me know.
So is it, is there an appetite to endorse this, a, let's say, is there a motion to endorse the letter from the Bristol County Water Authority to Governor Raimondo, Senators Philag, Seveney, Coyne, Representatives Marshall, Donovan, Knight, and Kassar, as presented in the report?
So moved.
Seconded.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
I just want to stand, stand corrected. I did receive the draft.
Okay.
I just wanted Mary's office to know that.
So the next item on the agenda is, also relates to the Bristol County Water Authority, and that is to discuss and act on the appointment of two council members for the renewal of the Bristol County Water Authority pilot agreement. This was begun last year, and because we're in a, a new year, we, we need to appoint two members. It was myself and Councilman Premiano at the last time. We're going to have to start negotiating to renew a pilot agreement, payment in lieu of taxes agreement that has, that expired last year and has been extended to June. And the, it's a, it's a complicated agreement that's gone on for many years, and we're looking at ways that we can renew that. I would be happy to serve again on that subcommittee of two, to, to meet with and negotiate with the other councils and the Bristol County Water Authority. Is there a volunteer for this? Mr. Boyadje, would you volunteer?
I'd be, I'd be happy to, sure.
Okay. So I would make a motion to appoint myself and Mr. Boyadje as the subcommittee for discussions regarding the pilot agreement with the other towns and Bristol County Water Authority.
I'll second that.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from some Barrington High School students who have done a great job of putting together a flood protection website. One of the great things about Barrington is that we're surrounded by water, but one of the dangerous things about Barrington is that we're surrounded by water. So, Ms. Jacobs.
First, Happy New Year to everyone.
Is, is that on? All right, Happy New Year?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Kim Jacobs, and I'm currently assisting the town as the Community Rating System Coordinator. And various town departments are working on different CRS initiatives, and I'm pleased to be here tonight to applaud the culmination of one of the town planning department's initiatives, namely the Barrington Flood Protection Website. The flood protection website was designed and developed by a Barrington High School team of four students. Two of the students, Sam Wolliver and Daniel Scheinberg, are here tonight and will provide a brief overview of the project. But before I turn it over to the students, I'd like to acknowledge that the project won the 2018 Student Project Award from the Rhode Island Chapter of the American Planning Association. And it's worth noting that this is normally given to college-level projects, but the website is outstanding, as you'll see, and very much deserved to win this award. So I'll let the students...
Good evening. I am Sam Wolliver. Through the Town Planning Department, three other National Honor Society students and myself got involved in developing a flood protection website for the town of Barrington. The student website team was comprised of four Barrington High School seniors, including myself, Daniel Scheinberg, and Johnny Zhang and Callan Whitney. This past June, we started doing research to determine what should be on the website. The town's CRS coordinator provided us with a list of about 45 municipalities who participated in the National Community Rating System CRS program. Some of these were in Rhode Island, others just along the east coast, and others from different states throughout the U.S. We reviewed the various websites, as well as any third-party websites they referenced, to determine what information would be most beneficial to include on our own website. Additionally, as we became more familiar with the material, we did our own research into finding said information. We copied pertinent material and links into a group Google document that we had created. We then evaluated and synthesized the information and refined it through a series of iterations. In the end, the team created four main categories for the website: Stay Safe, Flood Insurance, Flood Plane Info, and Flood Plane Parcels, each with three to four subcategories. Working collaboratively, the team programmed the website using HTML and CSS. Our ultimate goal was to create a streamlined, content-driven, and aesthetic homepage and subpages which were easily navigable and intuitive for users. The website is now live through a link on the town's homepage. Daniel will now bring you through the website.
Hi, I'm Daniel Scheinberg, and I worked with Sam Wolliver and our two colleagues to accomplish this website. So as Sam mentioned, what we wanted was for the website to provide an easy and appropriate user-end experience. So to that end, we put a lot of thought towards the design, as well as the function of the website. We focused on both form and function. So with respect to form, you'll see elements like complementary color schemes and carefully-designed icons and graphics that we did in-house. The student team, in conjunction with the town planner and our CRS coordinator, determined the general graphics. And then for all the graphics, except for those provided directly by FEMA, we worked in conjunction with a fellow National Honor Society student, Matt Peralia, and he designed those for us, and then we implemented them into the website. For visual continuity, you'll see that there are four central colors. Each, like primary color, for the primary categories is then carried into their respective subcategories. So that should make it more easily navigable for the user. As for the function side of things, we focused on carefully laying out categories that intuitively led the user through the set of educational materials that we'd compiled. So we're just going to quickly survey an example, a few examples of subcategories on the website. So here is in the Stay Safe larger category, and as a subcategory, we looked at protecting loved ones. So we have a series of links provided by FEMA, the Red Cross, and other reputable organizations that should allow anybody who is preparing for a flood or is currently experiencing a flood to adequately prepare and to make sure they stay safe, as we promised. In the category of flood insurance, obviously, there's a lot of financial issues that need to be addressed. So one in particular is flood damage. What are the costs and what is covered? Covered, excuse me. And again, we just took out a few links that we thought would be most pertinent, as well as easily accessible to the layman. And hopefully that graphic conveys the idea well. Flood Plane Info, this is a particularly important section because I think that the average resident may not be as aware of the intricacies of Flood Plane Info. In particular, one area we wanted to focus on a lot was Flood Plane Maps, because that sort of gives the graphic view into the flood plane situation in Barrington. And so an important element of this was actually designing the maps, which we weren't personally responsible for. But I think you'll find that if you examine the website, the maps are very well-designed and give a very clear picture. And the final category, Flood Plane Parcels, looks at property and responsibility of property owners in terms of addressing the challenges of living in a flood plane. This category, Elevation Certificates, is important for multiple sides of things as a property owner, especially with respect to insurance. So hopefully you have a better idea of the design of the website, as well as the content we included. As we recognized in the town of Barrington's Hazard Mitigation Plan, flooding is the most pressing natural hazard that faces the town. And we're pleased to have created this publicly accessible resource through which our residents can become well-informed on what to do before, during, and after a flood. And I hope that it will assist our residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys are looking, right now, you're in the flood. Sam, if you wouldn't mind going to the... Sam, if you wouldn't mind going to the Flood Plane tab, and then the Storm Tools sub-tab?
Oh, yes.
I guess it's in Flood Plane Maps.
Yeah.
If you, the Storm Tools tab is something that everybody should really take a look at. It will show you your property and where weather will be affected by water during a hundred-year storm. So, you're able to look at your property and just identify it. And then, it'll also talk about sea-level rise, and it is one of the more frightening websites. You can see with just a little bit of sea-level rise and a bad storm, Barrington Beach disappears entirely. So, I would, you guys did a fantastic job, and that's something I would recommend everybody take a look at. Anyone else?
Just thank you very much. We really appreciate that.
Thank you. Great job.
Okay.
I think you make a good point that that is site-specific and resident property-specific. And if there's an article about, written about the website, it would be nice to sort of, Josh Bickford?
If there's...
Yeah, okay. Great. Thank you.
We don't dictate editorial policy, but we can make suggestions. Next item on the agenda is our public comment. This is for the public. This agenda item is for the public to speak regarding a topic that's not already on the agenda. If you do want to speak, please indicate you'd like to speak by raising your hand when you're recognized. Please approach the microphone in front of the council here, state your name and address for the record. Mr. Ramashitis, please come forward.
Tom Ramashitis, Swan Howard Street. I know you yourself has been talking about getting a community action together to look at fields. Well, I would like the town council right now to try to form some type of a committee with the school department in order to look at turf fields. We have an opportunity to replace all our grass fields at the middle school with turf at a reduced cost, because a lot of that property is already going to be subgraded, fill going to be brought in, drainage. It's a great opportunity to do either all of it, or three of it, three fields of it. That way, we can get our grass fields back intact. As you know, we have no field space right now, and we have no opportunity to buy any more grass, or fields, or to make fields. So, we have a short window of opportunity. I know you want to meet sometime in February. I think we're going to be going by our window with changes that can be made to the middle school budget, because I know they're running a surplus right now. They're way ahead of the schedule, and they're saving us money. I believe that money can be used towards a turf field. That would give us a great opportunity for this town, not just to have an up-to-date school, but an up-to-date field system that would last us for years. You know, you get different opinions, but the fields last anywhere between ten and fifteen before you have to replace the carpet. It's always been school versus town. Nobody knows who owns what. Basically, it's town property. The way I look at it is the school is the school. That's their property. The fields around the school are town. When we replant the grass fields there, it's going to take a good two years before we can even use them. So, I would like to urge you to do some type of a committee. As a resident of the town, I feel it would benefit more children than go to the middle school. It's not just a school project, it's a community project. We should be getting involved, community involvement also. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is to discuss and act on the council liaisons to the Barrington Boards and Commissions. We call these liaisons, but it's actually a little bit more complicated than that, because in some cases, you're actually a member of the committee and not a liaison. So, for example, in the case of the Middle School Building Committee, we have a voting member on that. And in the case of the ad hoc tax exemption, we have a voting member and chair of that committee. But other committees are ones that we have developed, and you've seen us interview some folks from, to be members of those committees. And our role as liaison is to report to them council actions that might impact, or report to the council committee actions that are thought to be relevant. And just ensure that things are running smoothly on those committees. So, we have quite a few committees, and I have proposed, based on last year's, where we were last year, as well as requests from the council members, a list of committee assignments for each of us. And I wondered if anyone had any questions, or comments, or changes, or anything for these. Nope?
I'm good with them.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the proposed liaison assignments as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second? Made and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The next item is to discuss and act on resolutions. And that, we have one resolution, and that is necessary, well, the, there is a requirement that, we've made charter changes in the last election. Those changes must be accepted by the General Assembly, and this resolution requests that they accept those changes and presents bills in a form that would effectuate that. Any concerns or questions about that? Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolutions as presented in item twenty-one of the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Made and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next is to discuss and act on bids. The first one is from the Planning Department, and this is to award a bid for a water play feature at Police Cove Park to Catalan Construction in Cumberland. Town Planner, Mr. Herbie.
Yes, this is the second part of a two-part bid effort at Police Cove Park to provide more features that will draw people into the park and use the park, especially during the hotter part of the year. The first bid was awarded in November for the shade structure, which would be installed this spring. And this part of the project is the water play feature, which is in the concrete gathering area with the benches by the water. This would replace, this will require removing and relocating the metal sculpture to a spot that's, you can see it on Ariel, near the eating area, which is also where the shade structure's going. The town had secured a $95,000 grant from DEM to help cover the cost of these projects. The project was endorsed by the Parking Rec Commission and the council previously. This cost is in the amount of, well, this was bid out, and the low bidder out of four bidders was Catalan Construction of Cumberland, an amount of $126,770 for the base bid, which is splash pad, including all the work regarding the water line upgrade, which is a significant cost, and placing that splash pad in that area as I was describing. The alternate includes the relocation of the sculpture, alternate one, with, near the eating area, to include plantings and some curbing around that. That cost is $6,180. Alternate two is additional plantings as well within the site at a cost of $56,88. So, the total recommended bid, including the two alternates, would be $138,638 to include a 10% contingency. Our engineer, VHB, has looked at it, and they find, they found the proposal within the bid specs and recommend that we, they had no issue with us awarding this bid to Catalan Construction, which has experience in installing these types of projects, that they had, provided a couple of examples in their bid package. Do you have any questions?
I was just wondering if thought had been given to any other possible locations, or if that decision was made previously, I understand. But when I first saw the image of the splash pad, I thought it would be a great thing to have by the beach. I know we want to attract people to Police Cove Park, but if we're spending a lot of money, I just want to make sure that other options were looked at.
Well, the thought was that it's near the bike path. Right now, we're struggling to get, there's not enough there to drive people to this park, even though it's convenient to the bike path. I think the water, drinking fountain is probably one of the reasons I've been there a few times, if you're going down the bike path. And so, a few things can just get, really activate that park. And if you're in a hot summer day, you can see a lot of kids, a lot of parents with kids coming off the bike path. It's also near the water line, so it is expensive bringing it in, but it's really not that long of a run. So, it's probably more cost feasible to put it there. And also, this concrete there, it's a good foundation and place to put it right now. I'm also replacing that sculpture, which hasn't really, well, putting that sculpture in less main, this is more of the main feature, this water play feature, as opposed to the sculpture, which I don't think's really attracting too many people.
I think it'll be a great draw. I've seen a water park in action in Amsterdam, and it was, families were flocking to it, and, as well as Portland, Oregon, on their maybe one sunny day. So, I think it's a great idea. I really like it, and I think it will kind of put some closure to that park. It's been going on for a long time.
There's one more project I hope we can put in, which is the transient dock. That's like, hopefully, the last project.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So, the sculpture will be moving, I see where it's going to be moving, it won't be under the shade structure, it'll be next to it.
It'll be right adjacent to it.
And I'm told that one of the concerns about the sculpture was that it had a much taller sail. Is that changing, or will it be the same?
I'd have to talk to the sculptor to see if there's a way to extend that, to make it look more like a sailboat. Being cut because of the wires makes it look confusing, I think.
Right.
That'd be nice.
Maybe we can modify it.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to authorize the town of Barrington to award a bid in the amount of $138,638 to include a 10% contingency, to furnish and install a water play feature, install plantings, and relocate a sculpture at Police Cove Park to Catalan Construction Incorporated in Cumberland, Rhode Island.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thanks.
Thank you. Are you taking care of this, Mr. Cunha, the police department bid?
The radar trailer that was originally purchased by Rhode Island DOT was hit in a traffic accident along, when it was doing its job along the side of the road, and was totaled. We have collected the insurance payment on that and went back to purchase a new one. We were told by DOT that it was on a master pricing agreement, and we have not been able to verify that yet. So, we are continuing to try and verify that. Otherwise, we'll go out to bid, and hopefully, by next month, we will be able to have a bid or a master pricing agreement for you to approve the purchase.
Okay. That, the one that we did have, I thought it was just to tell you as you're going by, this is your speed. But one of the things it does is it actually records the speed of everyone going by. It doesn't tell you what license plate, we're not there. It does record the speed, and it'll tell you the average speed. So, there was a resident who had been concerned about the speed on their roadway, and by looking at it, it was a 25 mile-an-hour zone, we were able to tell that the vast majority of cars were keeping it at 25, and there were a couple that went faster. But you're able to really evaluate that over the course of a week or so, so.
If you turn off the display, can you still evaluate? Will it record with the display on?
I believe it will.
Because that's how you evaluate it. If you see the sign, you're going to slow down, but...
Good point.
I don't know if any of you opened the mail that was left for us.
Oh.
But coincidentally, it's a stack of letters from eighth graders who, as a science project, had done speed surveys of cars, and they report, all over, I've only skimmed them, I obviously hadn't had time to read them yet. All over town, it's about 90% of drivers are speeding. So, if they do have cameras, we might want to look into putting the insurance proceeds towards that.
I'll become like problems.
No. Well, we have two new patrolmen, so that could change with the speeding. So...
I'll make a motion to author...
We're not, we're not going to do that this month. It'll be next month. So, we're going to put that one off for next month, because we don't have the pricing agreement.
Oh.
There isn't actually a bid.
Okay.
Yeah, we need either master pricing agreement or bids, and we have neither this evening, because we thought we'd have the master pricing agreement.
Okay. So, the next series of items are introductions of ordinances. The way that this works is we must introduce an ordinance, and then we set a date for a public hearing. And in this case, we have four new proposed ordinances. The first one deals with public waters. Would you care to make that motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to introduce Ordinance 2019-1, an amendment to Chapter 148 Public Waters, and to schedule a public hearing for February 4th, 2019.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any, we usually leave discussion for the public hearing, but is there any discussion on this? Nope. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one.
Do you want me to just make?
Yes, you could do that one.
I'll make a motion to introduce Ordinance 2019-2, an amendment to Chapter 185 Neighborhood Restaurant, and to advertise in the Barrington Times for three weeks, and set a public hearing on Monday, February 4th, 2018.
Kate, could I just ask you to add to that, and to refer it to the planning board, because between now and then, we need a recommendation.
Okay. That, is it, can it get there tomorrow? Oh, no, no. We've already had the planning.
Ah, so, in that case, there's a requirement where I change the zoning ordinance, that you must have an advisory opinion. So, that's going to have to be a MASH.
Okay. Do we have the date for March, our March meeting?
I think it'll be March 4th. March 4th. So, if you could make the motion March 4th and refer it to the planning board in the meantime.
Okay.
So moved.
With that, is there a second?
Seconded.
Made and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one is the ordinance regarding the tax exemptions. Do you want to make that motion?
Sure. Just by way of explanation, we'll talk about it in more detail. This is just to clear up what was an ambiguity about...
This is just to clear up what was an ambiguity about the elderly exemptions applying to someone who is both elderly and totally disabled. So, that'll come up for hearing. I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-nineteen dash three, an amendment to chapter one sixty-nine, taxation elderly and totally disabled, and to schedule a public hearing for February fourth, twenty-nineteen.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And then, the final introduction. Kate, would you?
Sure. I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-nineteen dash four, an amendment to chapter one forty-four, public lands use of town hall hours, and to schedule a public hearing for February fourth, twenty-nineteen.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. This one is kind of a trial period. We're going to try to change the town hall hours so that folks can get here later, who can't seem to get here because of their work schedules or whatever, will be able to come in late one night and we'll close early on, on Friday to do that. So, we're going to do that for a period, hopefully do that for a period of six months and then there's a sunset clause, so we'd have to vote to continue that, so we'll give it a try. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. And this is an ordinance amendment to chapter one eighty-two, wireless facilities, article one, small cell facilities. I am opening the public hearing. This is required by, by state law that we modify our ordinances to be in compliance with those and the modifications will bring us into compliance with those. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this? Please, come forward.
Tim Faulkner from twelve San Osseto Avenue. I'm late on this. I haven't even really read what the ordinance is, but is this relating to the 5G wireless? Does anyone know? Kind of a network that they're trying to roll out?
I don't think it is.
Yeah, I, I don't either, although it might apply at some future time. Basically, what this is, is controlling where these facilities are located on, on public land to make sure that the boxes or the facilities on public grounds don't interfere with the public's use of the public area, that it blends in nicely, that the applicants go through a procedure where they advise the town of where they want to put these boxes or these facilities. And we get the opportunity to review that before we bless it, but assuming they comply with all the requirements, there is an obligation within a certain time period to either approve the location or to tell them that they're deficient in certain areas and they have to upgrade the application. But in terms of what you're talking about, it, it may be that that new technology fits into this, I'm just not sure.
It sounds like it is because I think the small cell is that network.
Yeah. It could very well be that it is.
There has been just a fair amount of pushback and concern about these because they use what's called like a low frequency microwave signal. They have to install them. Obviously, there's so much data demand for wireless devices. That's why they're making the move to, from 3G and 4G to 5G. But they use this low frequency microwave network and there has been some concerns, not only about the aesthetics of them, but to get that level of data and information that they're sharing across the network, they have to install them much more closely. Instead of having just a big tower, maybe behind the police and fire station, they'll install them every two hundred feet in, in all neighborhoods. So, there have been concerns that maybe there's some, especially for people with health effects or already pre-existing conditions, that these, you know, kind of radiation waves may be affecting their health. So, it doesn't sound like you're specifically addressing the health effects, but it might be something to, you know, study a little bit more and, and talk about it at another time perhaps.
Right. If there is an application, Mike, the.
It has to come to the council.
You come before the council.
It'll be on an agenda and that would be an appropriate time to discuss any of those effects if and when it comes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. Anyone from the council have any comments or concerns about this?
No, I, I did have one, but, but Mike's answer just addressed it was that if somebody submits the application and they check off all the boxes, are we obliged to honor it? But it sounds like there will be a hearing and if there are studies showing that these could be health impact, there could be health impacts, we'd have the opportunity to raise that, hear it, and make a decision. So, knowing that, I don't have any concerns.
I have some, some tweaks to this.
Okay, hold on.
Kind of a number of them. So, first, in section one, the definition of wireless facilities franchise, that subsection R, states wireless facilities franchise means the non-exclusive revocable license granted to grantee in this agreement. But there's no agreement. I think that definition was grabbed from some other document. That definition doesn't quite work. I'm not sure how to rewrite it, it's just.
Steve, tell me that again, please.
Subsection R in section one, it's a definition of wireless facilities franchise. It references an agreement. It's capitalized, so I assume it was a defined term somewhere else. But normally, what a franchise agreement would be, would be granting a, a public utility a right of access to your public ways for the purpose of laying out. That's sometimes done by agreement, not always. I assume this was referring to a franchise agreement, but we don't have an agreement here. We have an ordinance. The only way I can think to amend it is to say means, so wireless facilities franchise means any non-exclusive revocable license granted to.
Permittee.
I think there's probably a defined term we could use. You could say to a person.
To an applicant?
Well, the defined term person, we could just use that.
Yeah.
To a person.
Is it a license or a permit?
Well, a franchise is kind of its own thing. It's, it's a license, but not always freely revocable, but non-exclusive revocable license granted to a person. And I would take out in this agreement, so just have to use the public ways, that W needs to be capitalized, of the town for the purpose of constructing, installing, using, maintaining, testing, inspecting, operating, repairing, and removing wireless facilities. And I'd just put period, take out pursuant to, in accordance with this agreement. In section two, these are the grounds under which we can deny, essentially. And I would add in subsection B, this is Romanet two after traffic, just before the semicolon, or undesirable for aesthetic reasons.
Mike Ruslow, are you following this?
I have, um, two B two.
Yep, so, two B two, exactly. Yep. And I think we should, in light of Tim Faulkner's comment, we should probably, if we can, add something specifically about public health.
Yeah, there's something about environmental damage, but nothing about human damage.
Right.
It does say preservation of the character of neighborhoods, which is aesthetics.
Similar to aesthetics, yeah.
This is all based on state law. We can, I think we can. We could add Roman seven.
Yeah.
Roman eight.
Roman eight.
Protection of the public health.
Do you want, do you want that under protection of?
You want to add a, a Roman numeral eight that basically says protection of the public health, right? Is that?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yeah.
Make a V I I I, protection of public health. You know, and I want to, I need to correct myself. I said that if an application will come to the council, an application, the way this is written, an application just goes through the Department of Public Works. It's almost like getting any kind of a license or whatever. So, these applications are not going to appear before this council, the way it's currently written.
Okay.
Shouldn't we have that change, make that change?
Can we make that change or is that?
Well, it's going to be really difficult to comply with the time periods because your council meetings are basically every thirty days and we need to let them know within ten days. And again, that's being mandated by state law.
So, I think that the ten days is letting them know if their application is complete, right?
Right.
And then we have sixty days to decide yes or no.
I'm sorry, you're right. It does say the town shall make its final decision within sixty days. If you want to bring it to the council level with a recommendation from Public Works, you can certainly do that.
I do.
I do.
If we find that we're getting a thousand of these applications a year, we'll modify that, but I don't think we're.
Or one, or one for a thousand facilities.
Well, if we, I mean, if we have to, I'm happy to hold a special meeting, even if we had to, for, you know, timing's sake, but sixty days seems like enough.
Right. So, in section four A, make it the town council shall review.
You see that, Mary?
And then, you can just refer to the town everywhere else because it begins with the town council. You don't have to change any of the other verbiage, is what I'm saying.
Want to make sure Mary's catching. Are you caught up, Mary?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. In section five A, in the second line, it says accordance with the ordinance. I think that should be this ordinance. And then, section six, this, this is the trickiest one. So, I would propose to delete the first two sentences of subsection A there, so in six A, delete from the beginning in the interest of public health all the way through, or relocation of public utilities. It just, that, that language there didn't strike me as ordinance language so much.
It gives you a little more latitude when you're considering the application.
What I, what I didn't like about the language is that it seeks to, in some way, define the town's powers over the public ways. In the interest of public health and safety and welfare, consistent with the town's ordinances and plans, the town may make or cause to be made improvements, repairs, or replacements of the public facilities located on public ways. And while I don't doubt that any of that's true, I think that by saying anything, are we suggesting that that's the limit of it? And I'm not sure there is a known limitation on it. What we're saying is, we have whatever powers we have, there's no reason that we need to write them down in an ordinance to tell ourselves that we have it.
Right. Because then we can't do it for a different reason not listed.
The implication would be that, right. Such construction activity commonly requires adjustment or relocation of public utilities. That, that's a fact. Doesn't strike me as something we need to put in our ordinance. In the rest of that subsection, the town deems the right of public utilities to use public ways to be permissive and subordinate to the reasonable exercise of the towns. And instead of police power, I would just say powers with respect to public ways. And I say that, add that with respect to public ways because again, it seems like the subsection here is talking a little more broadly than we need to for the purpose of a small cell facility. And that goes for the next sentence, too. Thus, the cost of relocating a public utility installation shall not be borne by the town. We saw that come up not too long ago. The Bristol County Water Authority was having a problem with buried gas pipes.
Right.
You will also see this come up when people talk about burying electric lines for aesthetic reasons. Not every relocation of a public utility is borne by the utility. If we were to say, for example, we just want all the power lines buried because it would look better, the utility wouldn't pay for that. That would be honest. But I think this suggests that when the town wants a utility moved, it will always be at the cost of the utility, which is, it's not, not really the case. So, instead of public utility installation, I would just cross that out and replace it with small cell facility, which is what this ordinance deals with. And then, at the end of that sentence, I would add, when such relocation is necessary in connection with the town's valid exercise of its powers with respect to public ways. And so, that's just to make clear that it's not an unfettered discretion to point at a small cell facility and say, move it because I asked you to, but that it has to do with the town's exercise of its powers, which we sort of say here are superior to the, the rights of the utility franchise that we're granting.
Okay, so, let's start from the beginning. You would delete from in the interest through the set, the end of the next sentence, which is public utilities.
Exactly. Right.
And then, you would keep the next sentence, which begins the town deems the right of, with the exception of deleting the word police.
And adding an S to power at the end of it, so powers.
You got that, Mary?
Mm-hmm.
And then, add after that, with respect to public ways.
Cut that.
Okay.
Thus, the cost of relocating a small cell facility shall not be borne by the town.
And this is the part I don't have, and the last line.
Okay, right. And then, when such relocation is necessary in connection with the town's valid exercise of its.
Et cetera, relocation.
Yep.
Et cetera.
Yep. In connection with. The town's valid exercise of its powers with respect to public ways.
Why do we want to put that in? I mean, wouldn't we, doesn't that, we don't intend to be arbitrary, so doesn't that limit us or provide an argument for, for someone to, if we require something be moved, someone will say, well, this isn't a valid exercise of it, so that's one of the grounds. I mean, they can always argue that our actions were arbitrary and capricious.
That's a good point. I mean, I could take that or leave it. You're right, it's a limitation. I thought, to be fair to everyone, we would impose a limitation on our own powers. But you're right, anyone could complain about our exercise of the power anyway.
Yeah, right. So, they always have that right. So, I would, I would rather not have that part of it.
I would take it or leave it with that, so we could strike that insertion.
Okay, so, it would just end with borne by the town?
Right.
Okay?
So, cross that off.
Yep.
Oh, and I did so well.
You did.
And then, I, this is, this is my last change. So, in six B, this basically talks about our ability to cut or take them down in the event of an emergency. The second sentence where it says, if circumstances permit, I would just insert as determined in the sole discretion of the town. I say that only because I don't want a utility company saying, you know, when that telephone pole fell down across the street, you could have called us rather than taken a chance on it. Yep. We shouldn't have to answer for those judgment calls, so.
If, so, it would be if circumstances permit, comma, in the sole discretion of the town, comma, town.
Yep.
Not as determined by the sole?
Either, either of those is fine. Mike's has less words.
What would you prefer?
In the sole discretion of the town. "In the sole discretion of the town."
That your last change?
That's it.
Going back to Section 4, when we say "the town council shall review," is there a reason to say, mention anything about the Department of Public Works advising? On the advice of, or with the advice of?
Mike, can't we just ask for, as a standing rule?
Yeah, we could just ask for an advisory opinion.
Well, if these become more routine and frequent, do we want it to always come to the council? So, maybe if it's town council or designee thereof.
I suspect that this is going to become a fairly regular thing. And so, if you left it the town, that could be you or Public Works. And initially, we would bring it to the council until the council tells us, "you got it, you understand what we want you to do and how you want to carry this out." And then we would act accordingly without having to change the ordinance.
Is that what we did with utility petitions previously?
Yes.
So, they were all coming here?
They were all coming here, and you gave them back to us for my approval.
We didn't have to change an ordinance or anything to do with it.
Will DPW be as aware of the standard of keeping neighborhood...
Well, I think that's why it would be important for the council to initially make the approvals so that you can set the tone as to how these decisions should be made. And at some point, the council could say, "Okay, we, you get it. We trust you. You can take it and approve them on your own without our specific approval for each one." Because like I said, I suspect it's going to get quite lengthy.
So, I would go with Jacob's suggestion. I think, Jacob, you said this, Section 4A, where it says, with our recent addition, "the town council, comma, or its designee, comma, shall review."
It covers...
Yeah.
Just for context, I sort of asked around about these things to see what we're talking about. And what I've been told is, it's really not much more obtrusive than the transformer you typically see on the telephone pole, which is not great, but you drive by 100 of them without noticing any particular one.
Are they that high?
They're normally placed, yeah, I mean, you've got to keep them south of the electric line, but they'll be up there on telephone poles.
We actually have...
It's better than another tower in the middle of town.
We have, the streetlights have controls. And one of the things that, when we were sold on these controls, they told us you could create a Wi-Fi system. So, I don't know if this would count as a small cell, but it may have that capacity with some add-on or something like that. In any case, we won't worry about that when that happens. But any other changes? Do you have all of them, Mary?
I'm just going to meet with Steve at the very beginning. That's it. I'll meet with him.
Okay.
And we'll, I think, once Mary gets the verbiage down, if we could share it to make sure it's accurate with the council, I think would be a good idea because there's been so many changes.
Okay. You know, what we can do is, we will, when we adjourn from our executive... This is the public hearing.
This is the public hearing now. All you could do is, you can approve it because Jim and I also wrote everything down.
Right.
So, I think when we all compare notes, we'll have it. And then, when you get to review the minutes at the next meeting, you'll see if there's something we missed.
That makes sense. Okay.
I prefer you act on it tonight, yeah.
Okay. With those changes, I'm going to ask anyone from the public if they have any comments on the changes. Okay. With those changes, do I hear a motion to pass the ordinance as modified?
Motion to pass ordinance 2018-17, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 182, Wireless Facilities, Article 1, Small Cell Facilities, as modified.
Second? Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Next item is to set our agenda for the next town council meeting. We have a number of public hearings set, with the exception of the neighborhood restaurant one, which will be in March. We have those three that were introduced tonight, along with the polystyrene ordinance. And we will also be reviewing the October 1 minutes at our next meeting. So, just to make sure that we have those handy. Anything else that we're going to have? Oh, the BYOB ordinance?
Yeah, the BYOB will be ready for that, for introduction.
Well, that'll be introduction.
For introduction, right. Introduction.
Okay.
So, that will get a new number, right, Mike?
Yes, it will.
Like a 2019?
2019 number, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll also hopefully have the boards and commissions' annual reports ready for council review. That would be in the consent.
We saw at least one come in.
I think I've got four, so we're gaining quickly.
That will be an agenda item, right?
It can be an agenda item, or we can put it in the consent and you can pull a particular board or commission if you'd like to discuss it further. What would your preference be?
I don't know. I really don't know.
I think if, last year, there was one in particular that had an issue with one of the members not participating. And I think if we put them all in the consent, the vast majority are going to be just for informational purposes. And if there's one that has an issue with a member or a particular recommendation that they want the council to help support, you could pull it out.
I kind of like the idea that we focus on them. You know, sometimes if it's just in the consent, you know, we can tend to gloss over it.
Okay, I'm happy. We'll take it as a separate item. It may be very quick, in the sense that we don't, we're not...
Yes.
We're going to go through each one, but if we have a particular item, we'll focus on that.
The housing board may well have a proposal that they want to bring before us. Unfortunately, they're waiting on someone to come to one of their meetings to sort of give a presentation and some of their ideas. And that was tentatively scheduled for the 9th and fell through. But let's keep that as a placeholder if we can get that person out before then.
Okay. Anything else?
It's just the night before a small election. Just saying.
When will we know about...
Well, it is a very small election, though. Hopefully, a one polling place election.
Still up early.
Yes. Well, this is, we do have a number of public hearings. We've got four public hearings, and one of them is a significant one. Two of them can be...
Which one?
Polystyrene is a significant public hearing. That could take a while.
Okay.
It's also possible that, you know, people are all happy with it. Sometimes we expect it a long hearing, and it hasn't been. We have the tax exemption, but I don't know that that will be a long hearing.
I don't think it will. It's just a clarification, really.
Well, we will try and keep the agenda short. We'll be meeting in the end of January, so we'll look at what else is on there and try and keep it short.
We're going to purchase a pullout sofa for Mary's office anyways, so it's fine.
I don't know if that's in the budget, maybe just a sleeping bag. Okay. Do I hear a motion that we move into an executive session in accordance with Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A1, Personnel Police Chief Selection Update 4246-5A2, Litigation PC 2018-6025 Wood versus Clegg in the town of Barrington, and to discuss the executive session minutes from October 5th, 2018, for placement on the town council agenda for February 4th, 2019?
So, moved.
Is there... Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are in executive session. Thank you.